All right, good evening. Welcome to the Town of Dudley Board of Selectment, Highway and Cemetery Commissioners, Monday, December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Call this meeting to order and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item, Consent Agenda. Mr. Marcy.
Uh, oh wait, you get the licenses on here?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just take the approval of the minutes of, I, um, out of the consent agenda. I move that we approve the minutes of, uh, December twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, as written.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Standing. On present.
So what are we going to do with the rest of the agenda?
I guess, uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the, approved renewals of two thousand twenty-three on premises, all alcohol licenses, off-premises pack store, on-premise wine and malt, off-premise wine and malt club, as written.
Second.
And?
And common victuals licenses. And orchestra, entertainment, and amusement licenses for two thousand twenty-three includes pool tables, tooth boxes, and video games. You got all of them on here, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Class-one licenses, agents' or sellers' license, new motor vehicles for two thousand twenty-three. Class-two licenses, second-hand vehicle dealer's license for two thousand twenty-three. That's it. I amend my motion.
I amend my second.
Discussion?
Question, Mr. Chair, just to our Secretary, Michelle, did anybody not come back? No, everybody's back, good. Let's everybody stay in business. Thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Next on the, uh, list?
Mr. Chairman, this is, um, um, this is a annual approval that the ABC's, uh, requires. It's based on our estimated popular, populous census from the town clerk's office. Um, we're asking the board to approve the census as reported to us by the town clerk for the ABC.
Town clerk, you, would you like to read it in or no?
Can I just?
The amount of licenses, as the board knows, is based on the population, so annually we have to sort of just, uh, accept the census. To make sure we're within compliance.
The census as of July two thousand twenty-three was eleven thousand two hundred and thirty-two.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Marcy.
Um, through the town administrator, uh, the last time I remember seeing that number in two thousand ten, it was eleven three ninety. Have we actually lost population in the last ten years, Laurie?
The number that you were quoting is from the two thousand twenty census. This is as of July of this year, so it's two different census ones, so ours always differ a little from that. So that's the reason for that.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Town Administrator, you want some action on this?
Uh, I'd like the board to vote to accept that census number.
All right, we'll do that. Mr. Chairman, I move that we vote to accept the population estimate by, provided by the town clerk, based on the census and vote to sign the ABCC two thousand twenty-three seasonal population increase estimation form with the estimated population for Dudley in July two thousand twenty-three of eleven two thirty-two. We'll take any action, other action relative there to.
Second, Mr. Chairman, a quick comment.
Discussion?
Um, it's amazing that we have numbers of fairly steady with the dramatic decline in the school system. That counts school-aged children too. The schools are down also twenty-five percent in the last ten years. Just proves there are aging and graying populations.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, unanimous. Next is appointments. Kendra Feldetta, Capital Improvement Planning Committee, term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Kansas Kendra here tonight. Would you like to come up and introduce yourself? Just tell everyone who you are and.
Hi, I'm Kendra Feldetta. I have lived in Dudley since I was in kindergarten. Uh, I am the executive director of the Northborough Senior Center, and I'm just interested in serving my own community.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Any motions?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Kendra Feldetta to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee with the term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Have a second, any discussion? Uh, and thank you for volunteering.
Yes, thanks for stepping up, Kendra.
Committee.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None, unanimous. Uh, next, Dudley Police Department, Appointment of Reserve Officer Daniel Brunel, term to expire twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Uh, I'm gonna have, uh, Lieutenant Kalowitz come up and, uh, introduce Dan to you in a moment, give him a little bit of your background. Uh, this is a, as the board declared an opening, or declared openings on the reserve force. Uh, we received one applicant. And so, uh, I had been in contact with the evaluation committee. Uh, they chose to forego any type of interview process as long as we, we had reached a successful, uh, evaluation of the candidate. And so, uh, he's, he's passed everything that, uh, that we've had up to this point. He has a few more, uh, things to, uh, to do. Uh, so what I'll ask is whether the board takes a vote, uh, you'll appoint him as a reserve officer, and the appointment date is, is contingent on him completing, you know, his other evaluations that needs to be done. Uh, we're waiting on a psych eval and a, uh, a physical agility test, uh, to be done, which should be done within the next week or so. So what we'll do is when that, when those tests are completed, we'll notify the administrator, and, uh, the appointment will be effective as of that date for the board. So I'll have Lieutenant Kalowitz come up, uh, with Daniel and, and introduce him to the board.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I conducted a, a background on Daniel. Um, he, uh, seems like, uh, he's been doing this job for five years with OCAM Police Department, also at Charlton. He's been a reserve for both departments for five years. Um, he is, uh, from the area, um, grew up in the area. Uh, his goal ultimately is to become a police officer for the town of Dudley. He showed interest, uh, a couple of months ago, approached me, and, um, I did a thorough background check. I think he's gonna be a great fit for Dudley Police. Um, and, you know, if you have any questions for Dan, we're open to any questions.
Does the board have any questions?
Uh, yeah, to, for the candidate, can you tell us a little bit about, like, your educational background or your, uh, how far you are in the process of becoming fully certified to be a police officer?
Uh, I am currently for, uh, fully certified police officer. Um, I did the Bridge Academy, I don't know if you're familiar with that. Um, you have to have twenty-five, a hundred hours of actual patrol time, which I did at OCAM.
Excellent, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, if you want to just give us a little bit of, uh, personal information on you, what do you like to do?
Uh, I'm a big car enthusiast. I like, um, anything really with a motor. Um, I have a Harley-Davidson. I was a mechanic before I was a police officer. Um, so I'm a big, uh, big gearhead.
Perfect.
Bought a house in two thousand twenty in, uh, Dudley Southridge Road. I grew up in Charlton. Um, went through the school systems there. I went to Bay Path, did automotive, so.
Excellent, thank you.
I could, I could tell the board through all the, uh, background checks I did with them, everybody spoke very highly of Dan. Uh, they said that, uh, if they could hire him, we'd hire him in an, in an instant. And they said that would be, uh, he would be a good fit for Dudley, uh, being a small community. Um, that's why we're here.
Any trouble with the, the, that Boy Scout camp up there, Tretor Valley?
Uh, would, yeah, uh.
You love the, a lot of Cub Scouts.
Not them, it's who they are renting it to, how about that?
Renting it, yeah, those, yeah, not the Scouts themselves, of course, of course.
But yes, there is.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much.
The honesty, that's awesome.
Yeah. Uh, what's the board's pleasure? Mr. Marcy?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, um, approve the appointment of Reserve Officer Daniel Brunel with the term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Welcome, Daniel.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. What are we doing, a picture?
Want to come up?
Debbie, yeah.
Yeah, want to do a picture and then we'll.
Put a little photo up, too.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Hey, Tim, I'm glad you're here.
Thank you, thank you.
Charles is gonna have a hemi in it now, huh?
Yeah. Whatever that is. I'm a GM guy, I'm a GM, I'm a GM guy.
All right, all right.
All right, that was one.
And here it is.
Yeah, in front of.
Yeah.
No, no, I meant it.
Oh, really? It's, it's the joke.
It's, yes.
That was perfect, wow. And, um, one more after this, please, for Chief. Beautiful.
How do I use it?
No. Beautiful.
That's where it's January third.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, January sixth.
All right, next, uh, Dudley Reserve reappointments. One-year appointment, term to expire twelve thirty, two thousand twenty-three. Officer James Rivera and Officer John Gluck, Galacki. Uh, six-month appointment, term to expire six thirty, two thousand twenty-three. Officer Robbie LaRue, Officer Anthony DiDonato, and Officer Elizabeth Weiner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. These are, uh, new annual appointments for our reserves. Uh, so, uh, we only have, again, five left. Now we have, we'll have six with Dan. Uh, so, uh, two of them have, uh, have either completed the, the program, the bridge program to get in, or they will be enrolled in it. Uh, and the others are either enrolled in it or, uh, will be reevaluated in six months. So that's why they're, they're split up like that. But, uh, I would just have the board move to appoint, move to appoint those individuals. And again, this is a standard that takes place every, uh, every December.
All right, what's the board's pleasure? Mr. Marcy?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, uh, approve the reserve appointments as written in the agenda tonight.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Uh, citizens' comments, uh, anything from the, the crowd that's not on the agenda already? Hearing none, moving on. Uh, town administrators' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, first, I signed a letter of support for the Massachusetts Historic Rehabilitation Tax Credit for Stevens Mill. The board recalls this happens on an annual basis. Supporting Camden's reapplication of preservation Massachusetts for tax credits, that as the board knows will be used to offset the cost of construction when the project begins next year. As the board recalls, demolition of the flea market portion of the mill is reportedly scheduled to begin in February of next year, so we look forward to that starting. Um, next, there's, there's been a lot of discussion relative to the priorities of the incoming administration, and as the details become available through Governor Lactheely's office, particularly in terms of local funding, I will be sure to discuss them here. In terms of the most recent and potentially final actions of the outgoing administration, Governor Baker signed a three-point-seven billion dollar spending package on November tenth, that is a combination of economic development bill and a fiscal two thousand twenty-two supplemental budget. The law signed by the governor includes major investments in areas of broadband, housing, water infrastructure, and the Community Preservation Trust Fund. Uh, there's a fifty million dollar, uh, availability for broadband innovation fund and an additional twenty-five million for reserve for broadband infrastructure investments, including the Last Mile Infrastructure Grant Program. I'm not certain how that translates to a grant funding opportunity for Dudley, but we will certainly be looking at the possibility of fiber and radio infrastructure, especially, that's something we've been discussing for a while, for our public safety and public works, repeaters, uh, in two thousand twenty-three. We'll be pursuing that. Um, there's been three hundred and four point five million for housing programs, including a hundred million dollars for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, a hundred million for a workforce housing initiative, and one hundred million for the Commonwealth Builders Program. All these programs are largely related to single-family affordable housing. However, we will certainly review that, um, in what may, if anything, be a good match for Dudley. There's an additional twenty million dollars for migrant and refugee programs to streamline access to housing, shelter, food, healthcare, and legal services. Not necessarily a source of funding that would apply directly to our local funding needs, but we'll take a look at it. Um, there's a hundred and fifteen million dollars for the Clean Water Trust Fund, which helps communities finance significant complex and urgent water projects. And that's basically, uh, along the lines of what we're getting now from, in terms of funding for our PFAS issues. It's, you know, there's a large loan forgiveness. It's a loan as opposed to a direct grant.
So that's what funds those grants.
That's what funds those grants.
It's not new money.
No, it's not, right. There's twenty million dollars for Community Preservation Trust Fund, which would increase the state's match from an estimated thirty-five percent to forty-three percent, approximately the same level as in fiscal two thousand twenty-two. This doesn't necessarily apply to the Town of Dudley unless we were to vote to accept the town meeting, a certain provision of Chapter forty-four B that would create a special community preservation fund, um, by assessing a surcharge on annual real estate taxes into appropriate monies in that fund for open space, historic resource, and affordable housing purposes. And I would not recommend sponsoring an article except such provisions until you determine what the FY twenty-four budget numbers will be. And then I'd anticipate that we have, need to have a series of very public, very open discussions before we move down that path to accepting that provision. Um, so that's what we can expect from the outgoing administration's office. Uh, as a reminder of the holiday schedule, the town offices for the next several weeks, uh, Friday, uh, December twenty-third, we're gonna be closing at noon. Monday, December twenty-sixth, we're closed. Friday, December thirtieth, we'll be open for regular Friday hours. And Tuesday, January second, the town hall will be closed. And we suggest, because of vacation time, um, that our staff will be using, the members of the public that have business that needs to be conducted, try to complete, complete it prior to the twenty-third or make specific arrangements with the individual officers. I'm gonna ask Michelle to remind department heads to provide notice to the public of any additional change in hours, such as vacation time, that might happen or occur over the next couple of weeks. And then finally, we have some movements, uh, some movement towards a resolution, or at least the beginning of a resolution toward the Brandon Mill Bridge that has been closed. And I think the highway superintendent will cover that in more detail during his department head report. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions for the town administrator?
Just one, Mr. Chair. Um, resident reached out to me right before the meeting. Is the transfer station open on either of the next two Saturdays? Regular hours, Saturday?
All right.
Thanks, Jeff. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion to accept the report?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you.
New business. Sorry?
Boy Scout.
I thought he was gonna do that.
Uh, that got tucked in with my report, to recognize and accept from the Boy Scouts.
You want to, uh, bring them up?
Sure, could the Boy Scouts come up?
Cub Scouts.
Cub Scouts.
That's what I said.
So it's Cub Scout PAC two seventy-four. We can make that change to the, uh, agenda?
We, I think we've discussed it in the office, Mr. Chairman, that they, um, they recently had a cake auction, and they have an announcement they'd like to make based on the proceeds from that cake auction.
Could someone introduce themselves and, uh, let us know, uh, how it went?
I'll do it. My name is Mark Lapage, I'm the Cub Master. This is Lou, he's the committee chair. Mr. Brian Anders. Uh,
Ambassador with our portfolio.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, and this is Ms. Nicole, she's one of our den leaders, one of the fantastic den leader. And these are our fine scouts who helped us with this, uh, donation that we're gonna be able to give to you guys tonight.
So a, a little background, uh, the PAC itself has been in existence for over fifty years in the Town of Dudley proudly. And, uh, after a pause due to the pandemic, uh, with the help of several of the adults who are standing here, and because of some of the youth that are standing here, we are currently sitting at a membership of fifteen Cub Scouts, um, which is a two-hundred percent increase over where we were a year ago. So that's, uh, that's an amazing thing. Uh, the cake auction was a longstanding tradition for this PAC and supported, among other things, the efforts of the Dudley Lions. And when we started rolling this year, as, uh, Mr. Lapage had put it, now that we were done walking, it was time to run. And, uh, we saw the campaign on behalf of the Dudley Playground and thought, what a great place to put all those proceeds. Uh, so we held the cake auction the weekend before Thanksgiving. And, uh, I have to write another check to the Dudley Women's Club. I'm sorry, but, uh, I got a call late last night. We received eight hundred and fifty dollars at the auction. Uh, and to give credit where credit is due, part of the credit goes to our fine auctioneer, the chairman of the board, Mr. Johnson. Um, who told me, he was surprised, he thought half the universe was gonna be there.
Uh, that will be next year.
Next year. Um, we raised eight hundred and fifty dollars at the auction, and we are now, I have to rewrite this because we now have a thousand dollars to give to the Dudley Women's Club to go towards the rebuilding and rehabilitation of the playground. It benefits this group. This fits so perfectly into what we do. And, uh, it's an example for us to demonstrate to the Scouts, the boys and the girls, that we now have, uh, that this is what we do, this is what good citizenship is all about. So I'll give you this now.
Mr. Chairman, this is Nicole Fletcher from, she's an officer of the Dudley Women's Club that's happy to, that's been spearheading the efforts. that's happy to, that's been spearheading the efforts.
And it's also worth noting, too, that we wanted to thank the community, too, because there are a lot of people that aren't involved directly with the scouts. We put out a call to the community to help either provide monetary donations or cake donations, and we received a lot of that. So, thank you.
We even had one scout and his mother driver were from Charlton because they baked the cake to donate. And their cake was bought by someone from our PAC and they bought a cake while they were there at the auction and they bought one of ours. So it was a great day all around.
The same two scouts traded cakes?
Yeah.
We couldn't have done this without the gracious donations of people offering their baked goods for us to auction off. And of course, the people who showed up to actually pay for the cakes that were being auctioned. Of course, we could have had the event if no one came and there were no cakes. We wouldn't be here. So, you know.
And the chocolate bars we sold, too.
Oh, yeah.
That always helps.
So on behalf of the family of PAC 274 and the families that supported us, we have $1,000 for the playground.
You guys are awesome. Thank you.
Can we take a phony picture now?
Yes.
Should we go up there behind them? That'd be easier.
Yeah, I think so.
Because that's where the laser's going to show up, you know, right there.
That's right.
Of course, you're the tallest, too.
That's where the laser goes.
Nice, very nice. Thank you. Say scouts.
Scouts. Cub Scouts rock.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the pictures.
Thank you.
Just like to say, it was a privilege to be the auctioneer for that cake auction. Done it a couple times and the energy in the room and all those that volunteered to, you know, put those placards up and donate money towards the cake auction and their good cause. It's appreciated. Thank you. All right. Next is new business. Board to approve and sign Merrick Carlowitz Police Chief Employment Agreement, date January 14, 2023, to January 13, 2024, and to set swearing-in on January 9, 2023, or take any other action relative thereto.
It's the board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair? On behalf of the board, since he needs a second, but with great pleasure, I'd like to make a motion that we present for approval and signature for Lieutenant Merrick Carlowitz become police chief for dates January 14, 2023, through January 13, 2024, with a swearing-in on January 9, 2023.
Second. With pleasure.
Any discussion?
Police Chief.
Part of the discussion?
Part of the discussion.
Yes.
I just want to thank the board again for choosing me for the, to be the next leader for the police department. I'm looking forward to it. Again, I have some big shoes to fill. I want to congratulate the current chief on his retirement come January. And again, I appreciate the board's confidence and I hope that I can lead the department in the right direction as we have in the last couple of years.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think the board has made an excellent choice. Known Merrick for a long time, even when he was back in our Citizens Police Academy back in the 90s. He's a real stand-up guy. Did a very, very good job. And the department's in good hands. I mean, one of the things that you always look at when you're in my position is that you want to try to prepare people to take over for you when you're not going to be here and make sure this transition is smooth going from point to point. Because basically, just like all of us in these positions, we're just kind of keeping the seat warm. Somebody's going to take them after we're done. And so you want to make sure you kind of leave things a little bit better than when you found them. And hopefully, I was able to accomplish that. But I know Merrick will pick up the ball and run with it and he'll do a great job.
So I'll probably be officially done, again, on the 13th, maybe around noon-ish, somewhere around there. But he'll be the guy after that. But it's been a tremendous honor and I really, I mean, I'll have more as time goes on. But I can't thank enough people over the years that have helped me come through everything here, both from my wife and family, right on down to all the elected officials and the officers of the department, everybody before me and after me. Even just thinking today, when I go, I'm going to be the last person in the department that was appointed in the 80s. So it's a little stage of how we're getting older. But it's really been tremendous and the time's really flown by. But I'm very proud of Merrick. I think he's going to do a great job. He's got a good crew there and I think everything will go well. And I'm certainly going to help him out with whatever he needs to help transition into the next stage. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Got a motion, a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Mine's not working.
What's not working?
My ears don't work yet.
All right. What's next? There's a, the town of Dudley and Gentex Corp. Mr. Town Administrator?
Mr. Chairman, we've had some offline conversations about coming to an agreement with Gentex regarding some mitigations surrounding the environmental issues in and around their property. And I know that Town Council has had a chance to speak with each of you. So we're asking for authorization to, for Town Council and I negotiate a preliminary agreement with Gentex to move forward cooperatively to address those issues.
It's the board's pleasure. Mr. Marcy?
Mr. Chairman, I vote that we authorize the town administrator and town council to negotiate preliminary agreement and further to give the town administrator the authority to approve agreement in consultation with town council between the town of Dudley and Gentex Corporation as related to engineering, mitigation, testing, legal, and environmental actions, and is recommended by town council or take any other action relative thereto.
A second with a question.
Discussion.
So does this mean if town administrator, town council, they'll still present the final agreement to us for official vote, right? This is just a...
It would mean that we would have a preliminary agreement in place because time is of the essence.
Right, and bring that forward?
And then we would reserve the right for further changes down the road.
Perfect. Thank you.
It's a preliminary agreement, not a final.
It reserves the right. This is where we are now. Everyone's up to date.
Right.
Perfect. So we'll see it before final?
No, you won't see it before final. You'll have, we will reserve the right to, as more conditions become apparent, to alter and change that agreement. This is no, yes, there's no difference from, there's nothing different from what the board is already aware of.
Great. Perfect. Thank you.
We have a motion, a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Unanimous. Patrolman vacancy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This would just, again, be to replace my position. So as you know, we do appointments through our reserve force. So we'd like to get this posted as soon as possible and get that process in place and have the person be able to take over when I leave in the middle of January. So this is just a formality. If the board can vote to declare that position open, it would be appreciated.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we declare a full-time patrolman vacancy on the police department effective January 14, 2023, or take any other action relative thereto.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Let's see. Let's talk about highway superintendent. Talk about overspending on snow and ice line item.
Mr. Chairman, this is an annual occurrence where we ask, going into the heavier winter months, permission, should it happen, in the middle of a snowy period, for the highway superintendent to overspend the snow and ice line item in his budget. Should it become necessary.
It's the board's pleasure. Mr. Marcy?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize this highway superintendent to overspend the snow and ice line item in his budget if required in fiscal year 2023. Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Marcy?
Yeah, just like Jonathan said, this is something that, you know, it's one of the only accounts we're allowed, authorized to do that, right, Mr. Town Administrator?
That's right. Some years we've come in and had a surplus. Some years we've gone over what was budget. It's based on the weather. And of course, if we do overspend, it hits free cash in the next fiscal year and settles itself up before we can declare free cash.
We've got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. All right. Public hearing. 7:12? We will open up the public hearing on changing of manager Dudley Links Operations LLC, Dudley Hill Golf Club, Tracy McCormick. Sure, yeah. Could each of you introduce yourselves?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Andrew Upton, attorney for the applicant. And with me is the proposed manager of record.
Hi, I'm Tracy McCormick. I'm the resident district manager for Nichols College.
Bob Levine, vice president of operations, Nichols College.
This is Nichols College golf course license. The college retains a management company to run the golf course and they are now replacing the management company. So the old management company had a manager who will no longer be with us and the new management company has appointed Tracy. And I can tell you she's extensively experienced in the sale and service of alcohol and in supervision of the sale and service of alcohol. She has been approved as a liquor license manager a couple of times before by local communities and by the ABCC. She meets all the qualifications. She's a US citizen, a Mass resident. She has a clean criminal record. And I said she's been previously approved and she's looking forward to getting to work on the golf course. And we're all glad to answer any questions.
Tracy, can you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. So I'm currently the resident district manager for American Dining Creations at Nichols College. Prior to that, I worked for a company called Sedexo for about 16 years, most recently in Boston overseeing Federal Reserve Bank, Boston, Liberty Mutual, and Foley Hoag down in the Seaport. Prior to that, I was at Mass Mutual Financial, which the liquor license was in my name in Springfield. I was also at Old Sturridge Village for Sedexo. I had a liquor license there as well. That was probably 2008-ish around there. And then prior to that, I worked for about 10 years, restaurant associates at the Public House in Sturridge.
What's, the board have any questions?
Just to the attorney, you listed off some things. Does that include tip certified?
Yeah, that's not a statutory requirement, but she is.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Will anything be changing? Hours of operation? Anything?
Not at this time, no.
No, no, we're just...
No change to any aspect of the operation on the premises. But as Tracy takes over and evaluates and works with Bob to upgrade the facilities, if there are any changes that impact the license, we'll file the appropriate amendment and come back to you.
Will the new management honor existing gift cards that maybe weren't used previous year?
That's a good question. We will work through that.
I'm sure, this came kind of late in the season. I'm sure there's people that had some and probably didn't use up.
Yeah, so I'm sure if there are gift cards, we will work through that to honor.
Work through that to honor so no one will go without.
It's a good question, because we're looking at the clubhouse and specifically the bar and the restaurant, which for the most part has been closed since COVID. So I'm unaware of any. I've been in contact with the current Tri-State. So I'm unaware of any of that, especially given that restaurant's been closed since pre-COVID.
It's just something that I've noticed come up in other communities with the amount of food service, restaurants, bars closing. I just asked.
Appreciate you bringing that up.
Well, Mr. Sullivan asked. That's why.
I guess I'll have that conversation with Tri-State because like I said, they closed the restaurant portion of that pre-COVID.
And I've been there where they allowed people to sit on that side, but obviously they weren't serving food.
Right. Exactly. Yes, exactly. I mean, they've kept the liquor license, but the food end of it.
It's kind of like technically closed, but if there was overflow, people could just kind of sit at the table and have a water or something.
The gift certificates could have been for golf, too, right?
No, they're generally just...
Just for food or drink?
No, for anything.
Yeah.
You just bought like a $75 card.
It might not just be restaurant, right?
Okay. We'll look into that. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
All right. Any other discussion? It's the board's pleasure.
I just wanted, if I couldn't, Mr. Chairman. Are we running, is Nichols running a shuttle service between the golf course and the campus? I know the president mentioned that he was going to make sure that that happened.
If the need is there, yes. We do have, we already have a shuttle service, so yes.
The need meaning students?
Student, yeah, from our community.
Is it regularly run between the two places?
It's got a regular schedule to various areas in Dudley and I think it goes out to Blackstone, out to the mall.
Does it service the golf course as well?
It hasn't yet, but that is the intent.
Oh, it hasn't. I just don't like it when we have conversations, and I'm going to, I'll leave it at this. I don't like it when we have conversations with the president and then it doesn't come to fruition. When we had that appreciation night during the football game, there were a few things that haven't come to fruition. If you could just let him know that I'm disappointed and we'll leave it there because we'll go down a rabbit hole. And I don't think this is the time.
Then, you know, I might have misspoken too. I mean, if he's made some commitments that I'm unaware of. I mean, the shuttle service is there. It does regularly run.
We could have some follow-up on that.
Sure, absolutely. Specifically for the golf course, the shuttle.
That was something that was mentioned.
Yeah.
It's, you want to make a phone call to... Did he return? Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Did he return the phone call, the initial? No?
We may play phone tag through the chair.
Any other discussion? Did we make a motion? Close the hearing. Close the public hearing. That's right. You just told me that. Close the public hearing at 7:17. Mr. Marcy?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the change of manager from Dudley Links Operations LLC, does business as Dudley Hill Golf Club, to Tracy L. McCormick.
I'll second with a question. Going back to my question and Kerry's. Is it sufficient for the board to close it and give it to them with all those answers? Do we want to put a condition on every responses, especially about the shuttle? Or would you rather just give it to them in good faith?
So this is in regards to changing of the manager?
Correct, but sometimes people have a tendency to come up quicker with some answers if there's a reason to.
Are either of the questions germane to the manager change?
I suppose you could stretch it and say yes, because if she's the manager and Bob's the VP, one of them has to be obligated to get the answers back, especially including the shuttle, if that's more of a safety issue as opposed to... especially including the shuttle, if that's a more of a safety issue as opposed to a convenience issue. I mean, I'm, I'm assuming, I've known Mr. Levine a long time, I'm assuming he'll get back to us whether we like the answer or not, but I'm just saying sometimes it's not a bad idea if, either way, I could care less.
Is there a proposal for, change the motion?
And if not.
Mr. Chairman.
I can live with it.
I'm more than willing to, I could have an answer for you tomorrow.
I don't want to change my motion, Mr. Chairman. I think we assume positive intent that the, our partners will respond back to us.
The shuttle is there, and if that's what the president has committed, I'm quite confident that shuttle will run, and I can confirm that for you tomorrow.
Thanks, Bob. Is that satisfied?
I guess I don't bother a long time. I take him as a man of his word, no doubt.
Any, any other discussion? Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
No.
All right, four to one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Very quick, great, good job. All right, old business, highway superintendent, update on Brandon Road Mill Race Bridge.
Good evening. So we've had a good, good response to the request for proposals for the demolition of the bridge. There were twenty-one or twenty-two respondents. Today, we had a, a pre-bid meeting at the site. Ten, ten of the contractors showed up. That's, it was a mandatory, mandatory meeting. They were able to go over any of the issues that they may have had questions on, and were able to view the, the site, so. We, we'll have the bid opening in January, and it'll allow us to, providing we, we come back with a desirable result as far as the bids, we'll be able to proceed with the demolition early spring. So, and that's about, that's about it for the bridge. I don't know if you want me to?
Yeah, when do you?
Do the rest of the stuff? Yeah. So as far as the overspending, I know you talked about that earlier, the, there was a little over twelve dollars, twelve dollar and fifty cent a, a ton increase in road salt this year, so we did, we did realize that. I was able to buy early on last year's terms, so we saved about twelve thousand dollars on purchasing early, so. But there are other expenses to contend with. Our crews are still out patching the asphalt plants, planning a shutdown on Wednesday, so we've been out doing hot mix patching for the last several weeks to try and take care of any of the, the road defects and preparing for the snow and ice season, so that's about it.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. Resident asked about, no, Corbin Road, did I already ask you this? Corbin Road, half it we got repaved, but it was the other half set for the spring. We, did I see that last time, and you were gonna check on it?
I, I don't recall the conversation, but we, yeah, so last, last season, we did a portion of Corbin Road that we, that we had repaved because of the, because of the budget issue with the chapter ninety apportionment being used towards the demolition until we know exactly what that figure is on the demolition for the bridge. I, I don't have a hard schedule set. I ha, I do have, you know, an assessment on, on the, on the needs for resurfacing, but I don't know what funds will be available until we, until we get that final number on the, with the, the bid return on the demolition for the bridge.
So you have more, more information in the spring?
More information in the spring.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, let's see, wait, 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 wait. Student rep is not here. Departmental communication. Start with, let's start with you, Mr. Kamanyani.
Good to hear us from the back.
Department heads, let's talk about department heads.
Of course.
Good evening. I'll keep it brief. We have the bills printed. They're out of the building. They're at Karen Graphics. I know. They get delivered when they get delivered. I send the message out all the time. Someone who wants to get that payment in, to get the deduction for their taxes, and they don't have a bill in hand, please reach out, happy to do that. Also, anybody who's going down to Florida after the holidays, happy to forward a bill. Sometimes the US Postal Service does a great job. Sometimes it winds up on somebody's daughter-in-law's car's front seat. Happy to do things like that. We're gonna have, it's gonna be the last payroll next week. We're gonna have W-2s after that. Just ringing the bell. Anybody who received a check, may have changed the post office box, may have bought a house, may have moved. We want to make sure that all those addresses are right when we send out the tax forms. Did our herd health insurance responsibility disclosure, X amount of employees offered insurance, took the insurance, declined the insurance. It's all part of the health insurance policy manual. All set? The, the herd reporting has been done. Remember, we have a lookback period that runs from March first to the last day of February when it comes to qualifications for the health insurance. Worcester Regional is going to have their assessment meeting coming up in two weeks. I think I'll stop right there. Excellent staff. I, this is the first time I got to monitor the bill printing as opposed to rolling up my sleeves and doing it all. It's a matter of memorializing directions, following through on the directions, things like that. Always thanking Karen Graphics. Supporting a local vendor as much as we have new, new software. They still go through and do a tremendous job for us. And with that, thank you. Questions?
Thanks, Rich.
Any questions for Treasure Collective? No?
Thanks, Rich.
Thanks, Rich. Fire chief's not here. Police. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two quick things, but actually one I'll probably have to get an opinion from what the board wants to do. We'll be distributing our toys and everything else like that, probably starting tomorrow. So still, if there's anybody that has any last minute donations they want to make, we'd gladly accept them up until tomorrow. And then whatever's left over, we're gonna work with Food Share and try to get the things distributed locally. So I thank Officer Remalad and Officer Pacheco, the lieutenant, Chandler Boyd, and a few others that really helped out with that program. That's appreciated. We just got word today that Paige Marrows will be graduating on December thirtieth. She'll be graduating from the academy. So again, we just got that notification today. We, we anticipated her graduating the week after. And so we're kind of in a little quandary here with, you're not meeting until the ninth. And so I'm not sure how it can proceed, but we'd probably want to make her appointment effective New Year's Eve on the thirty-first. So I don't know if this falls under an unanticipated item, or whatever it would be, or how the board wants to handle it. Because I know you're not meeting again until the ninth, so you have like three weeks between now and the next meeting. And again, we just got this notice today, so this was not something that was anticipated at all prior to even this afternoon. So I just want to throw that out to you for consideration, because we'd like to have her kind of working as soon as we possibly can.
So, I'm sorry, Chief, you're asking for an appointment as a patrolman?
Yes.
Okay. Could she work as a reserve till we meet next, with the same?
I think she probably could, if, if you wanted to do that till, till the ninth, if, because technically she was still a reserve, so if you wanted to probably add her to the, to the list we did earlier, and just make her appointment until the, until the ninth in her reserve status, and then we can put it on for the ninth for a full-time appointment. So it'd be just extending that, that timeframe, which I think she might have been already appointed up until the thirty-first of this year under her old appointment, so we just need to extend it for a week or two weeks until the, the board meets next.
Well, maybe with, Mr. Chairman, we could do that, and when we make the appointment, make sure she doesn't lose a week of service. We'll make the appointment effective on her first day.
Yeah, if you want to make it effective, yeah, till the, if you want, if you want to extend the reserve appointment, I guess, until January ninth, you could, you could take that action. So her reserve appointment would be in effect until January ninth. And then when the, the ninth comes up, you can take that up as a, as a formal appointment to full-time.
That requires another emergency action, right?
That's why I think it would be, I think you're, you're okay to do it. I mean, I'm not a, certainly a legal expert, but I think you're okay to do it since it was unanticipated. Again, it was just something we notified of today. We anticipated her graduating next, next week, and so it would have been, she would have been basically off for the weekend and then just had that kind of go. But that's one of the, that's one of the problems. She would have been graduating, I think, on the, on the fifth or the sixth. What about that date? No, excuse me. Yeah, the sixth. She would have been graduating on the sixth, but it had been moved up a week, so that's why it's causing this problem.
Is there something through the chair that we could point to, Chief, that just says that you got noticed at the last minute?
I can send you the email that we got today. It just notified us of the graduation, so you can have that for the record, that it just came in this af, this morning. I think about ten thirty this morning it came in.
If it's challenged, Mr. Chairman, we could always point to that.
So your intention was this was gonna be on the next agenda?
Yes.
And it was, you just received notice that it's a week early?
Yes.
It's the board's pleasure.
Be more comfortable making a one-agenda meeting
Yeah, me too.
before that date, as opposed to running the risk on any kind of appeal or complaint filed against us, because that would hold it up maybe even longer, so we can slide something in between now and the sixth, or whatever the date is.
We need a one-week notice, right?
No, two days.
Two days?
Seven, forty-eight hours?
Forty-eight hours. I mean, you could even do the meeting remotely, whatever, if you want to do it that way, however you want to handle it, it's, it'd be fine. Whatever, whatever the board's pleasure is, it's.
It makes sense, you know, cross Ts, dot the Is.
Pick a day between now and the sixth.
Right.
Yeah, then you just, the agenda item would be to make her, her full-time appointment effective on January thirtieth, and that would work. Excuse me, I'm sorry, not December thirtieth. Not to cross anything, that's up there. Full-time appointment, Paige Marrows.
Next week, one day, be good, in my opinion. They're closing at twelve Friday, so.
Yeah, whatever the board decides, we can, we can work it out, however you want to do it.
We'll put something out.
We'll get it done, Chief. Yeah, we'll get it.
Thank you. Sorry to dump some last minute thoughts on you.
No, it's, it's good news.
Chief, right to the finish line. I would have had Merrick handle that one. I'm gonna delegate this to the acting chief.
All right, we've done with departmental. Uh, public notices of general interest, Deb Laplaca on the agenda.
Hi, Jan.
You are.
Oh, my goodness. So, good evening. I should have read the agenda all the way to the end.
Well, my problem is I read the agenda, and if anyone tries to change it on me, I get all upset.
Public notices of general public interest is something that I've been working with John Ruda on, adding to your agenda for your, your meetings. And this is just an opportunity to bring out some of the great things happening in the community, whether it's within the town hall itself or out in some of our Cub Scout packs, or women's clubs, or things like that. What I was hoping is to get my name and my contact information out into the community. It's Debbie Laplaca, and the email address is publicinfo@dudleymass.gov. And we're really interested in hearing from the community, any great happenings in town, fundraisers, events, ribbon cuttings. What I have seen over the years is it's kind of sporadic. If a selectman thinks to make an announcement at a board of selectmen's meeting, it comes out, but there's so much going on that I think people would like to hear about. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Love it.
All right, board member comments. Mr. Landry.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I'd like to congratulate Lieutenant Kowits. I feel very calm, and he's gonna do an outstanding job. Great job goes out to the Cub Scouts, Dudley Women's Club, all of our departments, running a very, very efficient ship operationally and financially. And I want to wish them all a happy holiday season, to all their families, and I look forward to next year being even better. Thank you.
I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, whatever you celebrate, a happy one of those, and a joyous and prosperous New Year. It's going to be a good one. And I want to apologize, I got a little heated during that public hearing, but I, I was elected by the citizens, the voters of Dudley. I don't, wasn't, I, by an entity, I wasn't elected by an entity. I, I, sometimes I, I, sometimes I get a little heated doing this, because I, I really want to do the best for the community. I really do. And when I see something I don't like, I take it personally. And I, I, my vote tonight was what I believe to be in the best interest of the community at all. Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, again, I apologize. Usually we do it at the beginning of the meeting. On behalf of the board and the town, send our sympathies to the family of the former water superintendent, John Meehan. He lost a younger brother, Tommy, since the last time we met. Tommy was only sixty, which once upon a time looked like a big number to someone like me. Now it's pretty close, but I just, on behalf of the board, sympathies to Mr. Meehan and his family. I wasn't present, but I saw the parade and went by my street. Want to thank Michelle Jarvis and all her untold, uncountable elves that helped make it a very special day. I know the weather didn't cooperate the first time, but it's one of those things, as Mr. Marcy likes to say, it makes Dudley a special place. That kind of stuff your community does for it. I know other towns do it too, but it seems like we really hit those functions out of the park. Piggyback, Mr. Landry, all the town hall people, library people, anybody that offered the businesses, the residents. I saw Mr. Johnson's picture in the paper, becoming a weekly occurrence, but that's okay, he looks good. Also wish everybody on the board a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. I have a one child born on New Year's Eve, so he'll be coming up. Couple more in January, so the winter months get busy for us, but Merry Christmas to all, and Happy New Year.
Mr. Marcy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to mention that one of the things we had in the consent agenda were all of the different licenses that we usually read. And I just want to let everybody know, there's a lot of work that goes into that, collecting all the information from everybody who has a license. So Michelle, I want to thank you for pulling all that together. Those are, those are very important for our, our businesses in town, so it's just a necessary part of it. And, you know, we will go through and we will sign all of those, so thank you for that. Congratulations, congrats to Dan Brunel, who's now gonna be a, a police officer in Dudley, a reserve officer. And we're happy, it's always a good day when we have new people join. And always good to see the Cub Scouts, Mr. Johnson. I like to, I miss when my boy was on that. And I'd like to wish you all and everybody at home Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. It's the last time that we'll meet as a board until the new year. I think we got a lot done this year.
Maybe not.
Maybe not, this is correct. Well, whole meeting. But I think this time of year, I like to get a little reflective and, you know, just like if you think about where we were a year ago, and I, I tell my team this at work, like when the times get tough, I said, think about where we were a year ago, and then think about how far we came now, and we still have a lot of these very high-value projects that are still going on in the town, and at the mill, and, you know, some of the other businesses, and we're just thankful that those are happening and looking forward to more progress next year. Thank you.
Lot of excellent comments tonight. It's hard, I don't want to repeat everything that was already said, but, you know, thank you to everyone. But, you know, thank you to everyone that either works for the town, helps with all the activities that went on, that was, you know, outside of the, the daily duties, which are immense and all-consuming sometimes. So it's really a, a great day, you know, thanks to Chief and Frosty, the, came in, helped out. It's too frosty, as no one noticed. I think it was pretty, pretty smooth. It, it's really a, a time of year where you have to, you know, hopefully take a pause and, and make sure you understand what's important in life, take care of your family, friends, and neighbors. With that, you know, this might sound corny, but Merry Christmas to all, to all a good night. With that, I'll look for an adjournment.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.